Lord our heavenly Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be able to come together again. Lord, for the betterment of the citizens of County of Richmond, Lord, and we just pray that, Lord, over our leaders that you've placed before us, God, that we'd be able to continue to work together, Lord. Lord, for the goodness of your glory and to give you praise. And we also pray, Lord, as we have this hurricane coming through, God, in the outer bands, and just that you'd continue to keep all of us safe, and we just pray that you'd continue to bless Richmond in the way that you have. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Thank you, sir. I choose the place to believe this. If you're able, please stand with us in touch.
Clyde Legion, it's the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got tonight's agenda in front of you, commissioners. Items one through twelve for now. We need to amend tonight's agenda and add at the very end a closed session. One four three dash three one eight dash one one eight three, attorney discussion with our attorney privilege, or attorney for commissioners. So that's the addition of the agenda. We'll have a motion to accept that amended agenda. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed. Amended agenda has been approved by commissioners. Item four is a consent agenda for the commissioners in your packets. Items A through G, which includes the minutes from our meeting, last meeting in this very room, and those are a couple of the things. Again, items A through G, need discussion on those. Now I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
Say. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed. Consent agenda, items A through G, approved by commissioners. Item five is update from our Richmond County Schools. Our Dr. Joe Farrell's here, Superintendent Richmond County Schools, is here to speak with us tonight. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time to share some updates about Richmond County Schools. I asked the Board of Education if they would move our monthly meetings to the second Tuesday in the month so that I could attend your meetings on the first Tuesday in the month, and I look forward to learning more about your goals and priorities. I will ask for your forgiveness, I'm going to do a little bit of reading to you tonight because this is my first update, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't leave anything out. So I have members of my team here with me tonight, Dr. Julian Carter, Dr. Kate Smith, Mr. Melvin Ingram, and Dr. Tisha Isler. I appreciate their support. I will begin by thanking you for your support of Richmond County Schools. More specifically, we would like to, I would like to thank you for funding the request for four nurses, which allows all of our students and staff immediate access to a medical professional in the event of an emergency. I also want to thank you for your support for the implementation of our salary study that was conducted just prior to my arrival in 2023. Your support allows us to implement the second wave of the salary study and include pay increases for maintenance staff, transportation staff, including bus drivers, and clerical staff. I know they are grateful as well. We implemented the first wave of the salary study in the 23-24 school year, and that included our technology staff, school resource officers, and child nutrition managers and assistant managers. We will work to implement the third and final wave next school year, which will mean that all our non-certified employees will be paid on par with surrounding school districts, and I know you know how important this is as we work to fill positions with qualified employees. I would also like to share with you that we currently have three construction projects underway. Mineral Springs Elementary School Classroom Edition is scheduled to be completed on August 23rd. Now, we all know how construction goes, so this is a projected date. Fairview Heights Elementary School Gym is projected to be completed on November 12th, and the Richmond Senior High School Auxiliary Gym and Classroom Space is also projected to be completed on November 12th. These projects will give us additional classroom space and gym space for students. It will also allow us to transition our ninth grade to Richmond Senior High School beginning next school year with the 25-26 school year. I know that safety and security is always a top discussion in recent years. Some of the things that we have done to increase safety and security for our students and staff include installation of card swipe readers at all of our school doors, weapons detection system secured for all six 12 schools in place of regular metal detectors. A rave panic alarm initiative will be launched this school year or has been launched. Training provided by law enforcement, educating parents and students about reportable offenses in partnership with local law enforcement, school risk management plans in place for all of our schools. We have also applied for and received multiple grants. In the 22-23 school year, we received $264,000 to support having SROs in our schools. We received also that year a school safety equipment grant in the amount of $1,170,000. Training to increase school safety grant was $20,000, and the grant award in 23-24 was $300,000 for additional school safety equipment. And that's how we were able to implement the card readers on our doors and the weapons detection devices and so forth. We also have implemented a safety and security roundtable with all of our local law enforcement agencies monthly with members of my staff. We have given camera access to local law enforcement and emergency management services that they had been trying to get for a number of years. We've increased school resource officer presence provided by Rockingham Police Department for LJ Bell and Rockingham Middle. We've increased school resource officer presence for Hamlet, or provided by the Hamlet Police Department for Hamlet Middle, Fairview Heights, Monroe Avenue, and Ninth Grade Academy. And we've increased school resource officer presence provided by Richmond County Sheriff's Department at West Rockingham, Washington Street, Richmond Senior High School as needed, Ashley Chapel as needed, East Rockingham, Elbe Middle School, Mineral Springs, and Cordova Middle School. I have to take just a moment to thank Sheriff Gullidge, Chief Gillenwater with the Rockingham Police Department, and Chief Brown with the Hamlet Police Department, as well as Chief Roche with the Richmond County Schools Special Police for their support with all of this. They have been amazing partners for us in the year and a half that I've been here. I'd also like to share some academic successes with you. Our elementary teachers have completed science of reading training. As the state has seen positive growth in kindergarten through third grade literacy skills, Richmond County Schools has experienced the same. Our teachers are making positive gains with literacy in our elementary schools, and as you know, reading growth in elementary school directly impacts student achievement overall as they progress K-12. The graduation rate is always a priority for staff. Over the last few years, we have seen a slight decline each year that we believe is due to the negative impact of students being at home during the pandemic while in high school. However, beginning last school year, we implemented numerous strategic action steps to directly impact the graduation rate a long term. Last school year, we did see an increase in our graduation rate at Richmond that we are very excited about and we believe was a direct result of our efforts. Some of our efforts included, first, we hired a dropout prevention coordinator to work at, specifically at Ninth Grade Academy, since this is the first year of a student's high school experience and marks the beginning of their cohort graduation rate. Ninth Grade Academy, as a result, had 10 fewer dropouts this past school year than the year prior. We believe this was due to the efforts of our dropout prevention coordinator coupled with the work of the systems of support team at Ninth Grade Academy that included district personnel, administration, and of course, our teaching staff. Richmond Senior High School also implemented the Systems of Support Monthly Meetings, which included district personnel, administration, counselors, social workers, and a student mentor staff. Any student identified as at risk of dropping out was identified through attendance, academics, behavior, social, emotional factors, or any other concerns that staff share. Richmond Senior High School also implemented a fifth block to support credit recovery and an evening academy, which enrolled 38 students last school year for students with extenuating circumstances. We ended up, as a result, graduating 21 additional seniors. That gave them an alternate option to when they physically arrived to their classes as well as a mentor program with select staff working with and mentoring our students. Richmond County Schools will continue to make our graduation rate a priority with adding new and innovative scheduling options available to students. We have partnerships with, we have a partnership with Richmond Community College that allows seniors to earn short-term certification in programs such as lineman, pharmacy tech, machining, welding, and construction trades, where they spend the majority of their day at RCC working in a hands-on environment. Additionally, we have a three-year accelerated graduation track that ninth graders can sign up for so that they can graduate by the end of their third year in high school. We also have a path for students to graduate early in their senior year in December who meet certain criteria. We truly have something for everyone and have implemented support for all students who may be at risk of dropping out of high school. We are in a much better place with staffing going into this school year than we have been in recent years. We currently have 16 certified vacancies and four classified vacancies. We hired two new principals this summer. We hired Joyce McCray to replace Jim Butler at Richmond Senior High School. Mr. Butler retired. Ms. McCray has been principal at several of our schools. We hired Meredith Norwood to replace Jennifer Beck at LJ Bell. Jennifer took a position in Chatham County where she lives, and Meredith has been the assistant principal at LJ Bell. I also wanted to share with you some ways that we are working to engage our community with the school system. The first thing I'll point out is that we have a much improved new website that is more user-friendly and much more physically appealing. Our education foundation had been idle for a number of years, and we have revived that. That group has already had one major fundraiser and is currently planning for the next. We have started a ministers council to connect with the faith-based community to partner with them to get information out in the community as well as tap into volunteer support for our schools, and we just had a very successful Stuff the Bus campaign this week with a number of community partners and community supporters involved. I'm not sure if you're aware, but Richmond County Schools recently completed a comprehensive facility study that examines such things as the age of our facilities, the capacity of our facilities compared to our current enrollment, maintenance needs of our facilities, and so on. Once all of that information was gathered, the Board of Education was presented with different scenarios as possible next steps. They have had this information since May, and we have a work session scheduled for August 27th to begin the discussion of now what. I know I've thrown a lot of information at you in a short amount of time. I will email these notes to Mr. Land and ask that he forward them to you, and I have also, I will also be leaving a hard copy of the facility study with him, a presentation with him, if any of you would like to see that. And once you have some time to look at and think about those two documents, I'm happy to answer any questions if you don't have any questions now, and of course, if you do, I will be happy to either answer them myself or call on members of my team for help.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. Commissioners, any questions?
So speaking on enrollment, how, what does that look like compared to, say, the last five, six years? Or possibly even back further than that? Are we about the same?
Enrollment is declining, just like it is in a lot of school districts. Not at a significant rate, but it is declining.
Is that one of the reasons we're taking the Ninth Grade Academy to the high school?
Well, there are a lot of reasons why we need to move our ninth graders to the high school. Just the high school experience, for one, the expense of transporting them back and forth between the two buildings for the classes they're taking at the high school. But this construction project, along with some decline in enrollment, is allowing us space to be able to do that.
Are there any plans to do the Ninth Grade Academy?
So it will depend on what the Board of Education wants to do now that they have this facility study. Certainly, that's one of our newer buildings, so we are most likely going to repurpose that for something else. It could be an older elementary school with some redistricting, it could be any number of things. We're gonna, we will start that discussion on August 27th about what to do with Ninth Grade Academy building.
Dr. Farrell, just wanted to commend you and your staff for the work that you're doing, especially in grant submission and the success in getting those grants for the district, because those are outside donors that really go forward in helping us accomplish some of the things that we long to accomplish. And so commend you for doing that and seeking those grants. I know your entire staff is involved in that.
Absolutely.
And it's always nice to have those opportunities.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My staff is usually the ones writing those grants and receiving them, so yes, I appreciate you acknowledging that.
I just want to acknowledge that it's obvious that you've hit the ground running. You've given us quite a bit of information. I do appreciate shifting the schedule where you can be with us, where we can hear from you directly.
Absolutely.
And so I've seen success ahead. I was able to look at the building this morning. I'm going to get a parking pass with my son at the high school, and they are really coming along with that building. It looks really nice, so.
We will, that building should be finished during this coming school year, but we will not be able to move ninth grade in the middle of a school year. We can't, we can't do that to teachers. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming, and certainly hope we can do this a little more often. I don't know, in my three and a half, almost four years now, I can't recall an update from Richmond County Schools, and I really appreciate you willing to do this. It means a lot to me, I'm sure it means a lot to commissioners, and hopefully the citizens that aren't able to see y'all or attend your meetings, maybe they can see this and get more information to answer some of the questions. A lot of times, we're asked questions that really, we don't know the answers to, you know, really should come to y'all, you know, and that type of thing.
Sure.
But thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome, and thank you for the opportunity.
Item six, approval for resolutions to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. Robbie Hall, Social Services Director is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So we have several things concerning the Drug and Danger Family Task Force, along with recommendations from them as was designed and put into resolution by the commissioners for us to evaluate needs in the community and to establish recommendations to this board for potential funding opportunities. As you know, recently, we did an RFP for $150,000 for two grants to be assigned. In your packets, you should have had all of the applications, the information that was requested as a part for this. So tonight, we will finish that part of our mandate to just give the recommendations for the board's consideration for funding. Again, these are only recommendations. The board makes all final decisions on how those funding dollars are allotted per the Attorney General's agreement with the State County MOU for the opioid settlement dollars. So, so the Drug and Danger Family Task Force is seeking the board's consideration to distribute the $150,000 to the following agencies that applied for funds through the request for proposals for fiscal year 24-25. The original RFP was designed to award two applications of $75,000 each. Richmond County Schools requested less than $75,000. Therefore, DEFT is making additional recommendation to award remaining amount to partially fund Samaritan Colony's request also. DEFT would also like to recommend to, for the board's consideration only, of approval of an additional $10,000 to the award of the RFP submitted by Sand Hill's Best Care. So Resolution A in your packet was for $75,000 to the Richmond Community College for Building Brighter Futures, Combating Addiction, and Enhancing Job Prospects for at-risk Populations. So that was Award One, and if you stop me at any point, please do so, because we have several on you.
Yeah, I got, I got to go ahead and ask some questions before you do.
Absolutely.
Oh, I've never heard of the program, and I'm not questioning DEFT, I'm not questioning Richmond Community College or anybody, but over the last year and a half or so, we've dealt with certain organizations and certain partners that do certain things, you know, they've already got established programs. What is Richmond Community College planning on building with $75,000? I mean, I've read through the RFP, I know it, but obviously, they're not building a building, this is going to be a classroom environment, I would say.
Right. So they're going to do, if you'll look in here, it's a strategy to address, combat drug abuse and aid in successful reintegrations of individuals recovering from addiction and those recently released from prison. Through a partnership with the local reentry programs and addiction treatment facilities, the program will provide job training, essential life skills, addiction treatment facilities. The program will provide job training, essential life skills, and comprehensive support services aimed at promoting sustainable recovery, preventing recidivism, and fostering long-term community integration.
So are they going to be dealing with any type of counselors, or is this just just job training?
This is, under Schedule A, and when you look at different programs, it talks about the different sections or programs that can be in place to support people in recovery. Some of those are direct treatment involved, some of them could be job retention or recidivism, education, you can go through that whole schedule, and each of those are part of the spectrum of treatment. So, for example, just going to treatment may be the first step along that path, but if you can't find a job or you can't receive the services that are in addition to that, for example, transportation or any of those other things, then your path to recovery may take longer, or you may, you may come to barriers. One of the things that is a good example of that is the reentry councils have a live event where what it's like when you come out of prison and what you, what are all the barriers for you to be able to find a job, and how do you move forward in that? And so this is some of those services that are to support those people going through act.
I completely understand that, but is there going to be a process to decide who's going to be in this program, and are they going to take anybody that's been in prison for 25 years for, say, hit his throat or murder, or some kind of sexual assault or something like that, just put in a community college spirit? That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so they will have a screening process, the Brighter Futures, an evidence-based program where they would follow through those recommendations, et cetera. So that was one of the things when the DEFT Task Force was looking at that, was to, we don't have any of those existing programs, and that would be a good step to starting building that kind of service.
So who's going to screen?
So they would get referrals to this program, so it would be RCC. Yeah.
Saying that they're mentally capable of doing this, and they're no longer a threat?
They would have to qualify like many of the other programs that we have. So for example, in treatment, there's a screening and assessment and clinical assessment to receive treatment. It's the same thing, they would do their own educational assessment to see, are they at the point to participate in this program, are they not, are they in active treatment or not, et cetera.
So there'll be a person at RCC that's appointed as the intake person, the one pointed contact or intake?
Correct.
And is this person a counselor, or is this person administrator? Do we know?
I do not know, counselor, sorry. Teresa was in the interview process, so.
Does an administrator have oversight if there are safety concerns about any of those folks?
Always.
I think that would be extremely important, because Commissioner Breen raised a very important point. There are just some people that don't need to be in that environment.
Right.
And could benefit, but not in that environment.
Exactly. One of the things about the programs that we don't mandate how they operate in that fashion, so same thing with treatment providers can make a decision to serve or not serve, they can do the same based on multiple issues, for example, security being one of those. What we do, our outcomes, when you're looking at how we're monitoring to see what happens is how many Richmond County residents were able to enter the program and how many of those were successful or not successful to the program, which is a report that we give back to y'all at the end. And it's reported monthly after meeting. The DEFT Task Force, when they do a report on how many people are participating, how many accepted, how many successfully completed. Very similar to other programs that completed their stay at, for example, Samaritan Colony. How many of them stayed, how many of them successfully completed, how many left without treatment, et cetera.
So that brings up a good point and a question I was going to have. Mainly, it's a request for future, future intake to the program. Could we have how many people each provider plans on serving?
Oh, absolutely.
As part of the metric or part of the justification? I'd like to understand, you know, how much is $75,000 going to get, or how many people? And then also, could the DEFT Task Force give us some type of idea of what percent of the population in Richmond County is affected by this epidemic, and what kind of impact are we making through this program? I think tracking that as a metric would be.
Yeah, I definitely think we can add the metrics, because that's one thing in your strategic plan, you develop measures, outcomes, and evaluations, see if your plans are successful. One of the things I will note, in your packets under each description of the program itself, it lists how many people would be served in expectation. So for example, in Samaritan Colony, they serve a certain number of people, any of the programs we have. So it's listed in there, in every packet, how many people would be served.
Is that the packet you sent separately from the agenda?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I know I've seen it for the Samaritan Colony, and I think I saw it for Sand Hill's Best Care.
Yes, it's in the application. Yep. But no, the outcome thing, yes, we need to develop more and more. We're doing certain ones, overdoses, Narcan usage, all those kind of things. Also, we're looking at what we have, for example, people successfully completing. We now have the first year data to say, this many people that attended were successful in this program or that program, the ones we funded.
Thank you.
Robbie, the DEFT, what I heard you say is divided into two 75,000, right? You get the 150,000. So let me just clarify, RCC is 175,000, and the other 75,000 is just divided amongst three.
Close, yes. So we're making an additional recommendation for the 10,000 that you'll see at the end. So the way it breaks out is if you fund, remember, this is all just recommendations. The Resolution B was $56,075 to Richmond County Schools for the Youth Mental Health First Aid Responsive Raiders Training Program. Resolution C was the remainder of that money of $18,009.23 and 95 cents to Samaritan Colony Residential Treatment Program Women's Recovery Center. So Richmond County women would be able to attend that for funding. And then the additional request that's just a recommendation is for Resolution D in your packet would be 10,000 to Sand Hill's Best Care Addiction Treatment to cover the cost of services for clients who are underinsured or uninsured and who have applied for Medicaid but were denied to receive treatment. That is an additional $10,000 request, it's just a consideration that we're asking for the board. But the 75,000 would be divided between Richmond Community College, 75,000, Richmond County Schools, 56,000, and Samaritan Colony, 18,000. We did something similar to, remember, the last resolution where we had some money that was returned to us, and then we were able to ask for the commissioners to apply that. And I think, for example, two of our existing funders received those extra dollars because they were already at their total number that they had served.
We're going to vote on each of these individually?
Yes, individually. And it's up to you. Like I said, this is just a recommendation from Drug and Danger Family Task Force per the resolution to be the Strategic Planning Committee to make recommendations.
They might have sent us in the bag, but how many applications?
Nine, if I'm not mistaken, there were nine applications.
Nine total?
Nine total, and like I said, we tried to do the best we can with, you know, because everybody needs money, so.
When does the next funding cycle ramp up?
And that is a wonderful question. That is, usually, you can do it annually, or if the commissioners decide they would like to do a second cycle in this fiscal year, then that would be up to the commissioners. One of the things that you're going to see, you know you voted to start the program for drug treatment with the sheriff and the jail, and there'll be another resolution to cover the actual mental health treatment, we just saw the contract, so there'll be that. So you can fund individually, and then you can also release money at your own schedule or at your own decision. So, and like I said, so if you decide that you would like to start another one, say, we do an RFP and we started the process in December for January, you just have to look at how you want to cross over the fiscal years, because we would have to monitor for 12 months and potentially two fiscal years.
Robbie, I guess this is the teacher in me.
Yes.
Is there a scoring rubric that the team uses to score applications by? And if not, could we, could we develop one of those just to make it very clear to applicants and to us looking, you know, just looking to see what's approved? And also, just a request, I have heard that those that are seeking, you know, potentially being put forth for us to vote on, may have already been contacted. In the future, could, could we pause on that? Only because, let's say, for example, I would vote for Richmond County Schools to get all $150,000, but let's say, for example, I didn't want that to happen. And now, now Dr. Farrell's here to get his reward, and I would take that away or vote differently. I wouldn't want there to be hurt feelings or anything like that. Could we get a recommendation directly from your team first and then move from there? And then move from there?
We absolutely could. At the last RFP, we were asked to make sure that we contacted each of the applicants and gave an explanation. And so they do use kind of a question sheet with answers in that, and to give feedback on what could be done. So that's why in this process, we made sure to do that. Because at the last RFP, that was a concern, that we had not done enough of that. And so we did that. And that each one, my understanding was clearly made that these are just recommendations, that the commissioners make the final decision. But yeah, I mean, so we can do that. I mean, but like I said, from my understanding, you know, we did that because of the last concerns that we weren't providing feedback or notifying people before. So we can go back if you want to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do this all the time as commissioners. We have to make decisions based off, and we're trusting the committees or the teams that have been put forth, not just in this situation. But we do it from planning and zoning. We do it from all the approvals that we make for the different committees there are, you know, that require our approval. We're just taking whoever's brought forth, really, without... So this is nothing new to us. It's just, this is kind of still a new program to us. And you're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars available that can obviously change the path of any great organization trying to make a difference, you know? And I think so. That's why this has been so many questions from the commissioners, because it's a little different than the other that we face. So we get this all the time. It's not anything different. It's just the reason this is kind of a higher exposure because of the monies that are there. And you said possibly two, you mean two different RFPs in this 12-month year, right?
Yes.
Doesn't have anything to do with our fiscal year. It just has to do with the 12-month period.
Right, right. You would, if you decided to do, which you absolutely can, to do another RFP for a release of funds, then, and you did that for a 12-month period, based on where we're at. Right now, we're already kind of doing it late. So they know that the first two months will be paid at one time. And then we monitor it to the end of June 30th for our fiscal year, so that we meet all the audit requirements, which Carrie will be very angry at. But, you know, it's just that requirement. It's, if you're crossing fiscal years, then you're going to have to report it in both fiscal year. If that makes sense?
Any other questions? So you want to take each one?
Yeah, if you choose to fund any of those, you would need to do each one. There is a separate resolution in your packet for each one. Because based on the requirements for the AG's opioid settlement fund that the county signed, you have to have a specific resolution passed by the commissioners for each funding allotment.
So you want to take Resolution 1?
Sure. So it would be $75,000 to Richmond Community College for the Building Brighter Futures, Combating Addiction, Enhancing Job Prospects for at-Risk Population.
Resolution A?
Yes.
Any further questions on this one, Commissioner? Motion to approve. A motion to approve from Mr. Brooms, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Watkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So Resolution B would be $56,075.00 to Richmond County Schools for the Youth Mental Health First Aid Responsive Raiders Training Program.
Might make a motion for that.
Second, a motion, Commissioner Gani, second Commissioner Brooms. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Approved by commissioners.
The third resolution, which is C, is $18,923.95 to Samaritan Colony Residential Treatment Program and the San U- Women's Recovery Center.
A motion for that? Motion to approve. Motion, Commissioner Brooms, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Approved by commissioners.
And the fourth one, which is D, remember, is outside of the RFP. So it's a consideration by the board to consider $10,000 to San Hill's Best Care Addiction Treatment to cover the cost of services for clients who are uninsured or underinsured and who have applied for Medicaid and were denied.
Chairman, I recuse myself.
Yeah, Commissioner Gani has approved himself. Motion to approve the resolution.
Before we vote on it, can we change the dollar amount?
You can do anything that you wish to do. We'd have to modify the resolutions you have, which can be done. But yes, you can, any amount that you wish to do within the framework of your opioid funds.
I would make the recommendation that we adopt it as presented as set for the dollar amount and change it to $20,000 instead of $10,000.
There's a motion on the floor.
You made the motion.
There's a motion on the floor, there's not a second. And if it dies for lack of a second, then we could consider Mr. Brooms' motion.
I did have a motion from Commissioner Watkins right before that. So is there a second for the $10,000? I'll take that as a no. So Commissioner Brooms, is there any more discussion on Commissioner Brooms? What he brought, expanding that to $20,000?
I'd like to understand the justification for 20,000 or whatever the original request was.
Well, my personal opinion would be that we're giving $75,000 to a program that, for lack of better, I don't know if it ever existed. And $56,000 to a school program that, obviously, if we can keep kids off of drugs beforehand. But that shit has been, be seen how fated that's going to be. And you have an organization like San Hill's that's in our schools, in our faith-based community, every day helping. They've got counselors. They can handle the medical part of it. And I mean, it's, I don't want to call it a slap in the face, because we're getting $10,000. But I think they could do a lot more over $20,000 in these programs that have yet to show any kind of results.
Probably was the original request?
For $10,000 to San Hill's Best Care Addiction Treatment to cover the cost...
I'm sorry, their request.
Oh, they actually applied for the $75,000 as a part of the grant process. And what after DEFT considered options and needs in the community, one of the things that we wanted to see, you know, as we know Medicaid expansion increased the number of covered individuals by nearly 18% in Richmond County, where we have almost 51% of people now qualifying or on Medicaid. And so what we wanted to see is, you know, for those individuals that cannot apply, because if you're, under the resolution, it says for those that are denied. And so it would be actually those people who are underinsured or uninsured that would get covered treatment without a barrier for that. So we haven't seen a program necessarily that looks at that denial for treatment. And so we wanted to see that. So the other part of the program that we believe would be beneficial, or the DEFT believe, would be that those individuals would apply potentially for Medicaid and become covered, which would then allow them to continue treatment and receive any medical services that they needed. So that was part of the reasoning behind it, if that helps.
So let me make sure I understand.
Yes.
So San Hill's Best Care would be treating individuals who are uninsured or underinsured that aren't eligible for Medicaid?
Right, and they could use these dollars then to pay for the treatment. Does that make sense? But if they qualified for Medicaid, then they would use the Medicaid dollars.
So my question is about overall pot.
Yeah.
We're already, it's 150,000. This would make it 160,000 if we did the 10,000, right?
Yeah, yeah, or 100,000.
So that would take it to 170,000.
Correct.
What does that do? Explain to us what that does going forward.
Well, so you gave...
Are you allowed to do that?
Yeah, you are allowed. You have a set amount of money that over the next 18 years that you'll be receiving. It's roughly $8.4 million, correct, Carrie? Before any other settlements are done, you get an allotment. At certain periods of the year, we got a certain amount of money for the first couple of years. So you had some money sitting there, ready to be expended. And so you just have to consider, if you look at the chart that we showed before of the 18 years, at some point, you're going to hit where your expenditures are over in what you're taking in. And you'll have to make a decision on how you're going to do that moving forward. And so one of the things that we want to talk about more with DEFT is how these programs will be sustainable, for example, after the grant dollars. 18 years seems like a long time. But near the end of that cycle or about halfway, you're going to drop to only $280,000 is all you get per year. So with what you funded now, and when you hit that time period, you will not be able to fund all these programs on what you pull in, unless the county decides to use county dollars to fund those programs.
Robbie, let me ask a question. I might need to direct this to Carrie.
Carrie, yeah.
Are there any carryover dollars still remaining from the previous year?
No. So, so based on, so what Robbie was talking about and the thing that gives me grief is that we have to kind of wrap this up at 6:30. So whatever, and we did expend everything that was asked for in terms of the grants. So in terms of the oversight that we had, those weren't. And all we did was fund exactly what was used or attributed. So that worked out to be like $260,847. And so that is a combination of the two grants, the oversight and some other, and then admin, and a little bit of, there's some staff allocation. There's two folks that have some small percentages of their salary and benefits that are allocated to this. That also, Blusher Narcan Program, where our first responders is in that allotment also. And the GL Program, for example, which is not a part of the RFP, that y'all assigned money for the contracts, et cetera. So what we've tried to do, and maybe this answers your question more succinctly, is we have, we are, because he's getting these done as individual resolutions, those are just like we do budget amendments. That only gives us the spending authority. He can't lump them together like I would do sometimes. So by resolution, he's doing an ask-per-function. And again, if we don't spend that, it doesn't go anywhere. It just stops. But we only fund the amount that was actually needed to fulfill whatever those obligations were. Obviously, by the Fiscal Control Act, we can't exceed that on a fiscal basis until we come back to you again. Does that answer?
Yeah, that answers the question. And so an additional allocation now is going to carry over to the next fiscal year.
It can. For example, in your previous RFP, you agreed to continue to fund two of the existing projects. Remember, Samaritan was one of them, the other, into the new year. So you have an ongoing occurrence for this fiscal year. Now, we still will need to come back next year and say, if you want to fund that continuation again, because you have to do that separate resolution, or you'd have to do a multi-year resolution to encumber that money. If that helps. So when you did the two that he's talking about, they were, even though you did them in last year, they were applicable for this budget year? Because they still had an existing one for '23, '24. So when you continued those two on, you were authorizing them for '24, '25. These are the things that's presented tonight or in addition to?
Any further questions or comments on what Commissioner Brooms is recommending? Commissioner Brooms, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to increase from $10,000 to $20,000?
Yes, sir.
For San Hill's Best Care?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Robbie could do what you have to do to increase that to $20,000.
Will this?
We appreciate your commitment, your hard work. Maybe going forward, we'll, the commissioners will get together and see how we can be a little more involved upfront. Just so we won't, we'll know more again to come into this time, next time.
You're welcome.
We can get to sit down and hear the original things. And that kind of puts us in the line, you know?
I understand.
Coming to tonight. But we do appreciate y'all's hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 7, adoption of capital project orders for Richmond County Youth Service Line Inventory Fund. Jerry, that was a map for our...
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. This capital project order goes back to our $500,000 loan we received from the Division of Water Infrastructure related to the lead service line inventory. And basically, it's just an accounting formality for this project. It gives Carrie the authority to set up technically a line item for expenditures and revenue. And it's required by general statute to have this to move forward with the project. I'd ask for your approval.
Any questions for Jerry on this?
Jerry, this was, we approved this earlier than last year.
You've approved the $500,000 for us to move forward with the project. And you approved the engineering approval. This is just an accounting issue that was required by the statute.
Just to refresh my memory, does this address all concerns with any lead pipe inventory?
It does. It's the EP requirement.
Thank you.
There was a grant as well, too, wasn't there?
Yeah, we got a loan of $500,000, and 85% was principal forgiveness. So we're responsible 15% with $75,000.
Do I have a motion to adopt this order?
Motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Item 8, approval of resolution providing final board approval of financing for public service facility. Bob Jessup is here. What is tonight? Welcome back, Bob.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I'm Bob Jessup. I'm a lawyer with the firm Sanford-Holzhouser. It's been our privilege for many years to serve the county as the special outside lawyer on borrowing money projects. We're the bomb count of the county. Tonight, we're asking the board's approval of the final resolution that we need to put in place the financing for the public services facility. You may remember, at a prior meeting, you held a public hearing and adopted a resolution giving preliminary approval. Now you have a resolution that gives final approval to move forward, approves the substantially filed financing documents, and authorizes staff to complete the closing. The local government commission approved the county's application for this project earlier this afternoon. And we're set to go to a closing next Thursday, the 15th. I'd also point out that we have used throughout the process a placeholder loan amount of $7,500,000, based on the early estimates from the engineering firms and to leave in some leeway. But we can now tell you that the actual loan amount is going to be $5,500,000. So $2 million less than what we had originally estimated. We'd still like approval of the resolution as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But otherwise, that's the action that we'd like to have.
Any questions, Commissioners?
You say resolution as presented, but are you asking for the seven and a half?
I'd like to leave it just at the seven and a half to keep it as completed. But I can tell you that we were signing some of the paperwork earlier this afternoon. Seven and a half is a not-to-exceed figure. The documents that we signed earlier this afternoon already have the 5.5 figure in there. We didn't have the 5.5 locked in at the time I provided the documents here for the packages.
So you're saying that local government approved five and a half?
No, seven and a half.
So, part of that, if I may, and I'm not trying to take away what you're saying. So when we made the application, we made it based on the architect's estimate, and that's where the seven and a half came. So we were already on the agenda after the bids came in. So having to redo that, we opted not to do it. So is it like Bob said, it's what's called NTE, not to exceed, but our real borrowing is five and a half. But we were approved today for seven and a half.
So we're not going to spend another five and a half million on that?
Well, that's what we're borrowing. So we, we had some, the purchase is not, you know, in that, that was ARP money and some things that we've been doing and some architectural stuff. So the project will be bigger than five and a half, but we're only borrowing five and a half.
Any further questions on this, Commissioners? Not on that, for your motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution for approval of financing for the public services facility.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Have a majority from the Commissioners. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks very much, appreciate the opportunity.
Item nine, let's see. Yeah, item nine. Approval of construction bid for Richmond County Public Service Facility.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for our Commissioners. This is Kerry Ober from what Bob just mentioned. And ADW, who was our architecture, architect for that project, received four construction bids for our public services facility. The lowest bidder in this process was a local bidder, Hawks Builders out of Rockingham. And in your package, you will see a recommendation letter from Hawks for that, from ADW for Hawks to have that project at $4,318,063. You'll see some bid tabs in there where the other contractors came in, and I'm asking that you approve those construction bids from Hawks, where we can proceed.
Any questions for Brian on that? Not on that, ask for a motion. I should go for it. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Would you already approve from Commissioners? Item ten, monthly report, Dr. County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move in. I did want to remind the board and our citizens once again that our tax notices were mailed out about three weeks ago. We've had a considerable amount of foot traffic and flow in our tax office over the last few weeks. Obviously, that deadline to pay those taxes isn't until January the 6th, and that's when those late penalties will be assessed, but we're pleased to, to announce that we're already almost reaching 10% in collection, which is, which is really strong for this early in the year. Transitioning to our Solid Waste Department, even though we have been slightly understaffed due to some vacations and summertime travel, and also battling the extreme heat, August was one of our best months in quite some time for, for red side trash collection in Richmond County. We picked up 368 bags for a total of 5.28 tons. The guys cleaned up 37 different roadways throughout Richmond County with our staff and DOT forces. Another important announcement from our Solid Waste Department, our scale is out at the landfill. They are nearing 20 years old, and they are scheduled to be replaced Thursday through Saturday, September the 12th through the 14th. We do want to try to get that word out, obviously, we'll have it on our social media outlets, but we encourage anyone that has any construction or demo material to bring those in prior to those dates, if possible, to reduce their wait times, because it will be a little bit of a logjam at where the, the scale house was. Our current plan for that, and obviously we'll be publicizing this as well, is to close the landfill on Saturday, the 14th, in order to complete all the required scale house high ends, and actually reopen on Monday for our, our normal scheduled timeframe. That's Monday, September 16th, will be reopened. Staying in our Public Works Department, hats off to Jerry Austin, our Public Works Director, and his team for stepping up to help our neighbors in the city of Hamlet in a time of need. Last week, we had some extreme storms come through, and the entire water treatment facility in Hamlet was struck by lightning, and their, their plant was down. So it really crippled the city of Hamlet, and thankfully, you know, we have multiple interconnections that were in place that allowed us to provide drinking water to those citizens of Hamlet, so, for a few days until they got their plant up and running manually. So hats off to Jerry and his team for, for taking care of that. Segue into a few reminders from our East Rockingham Pool and Castlewood Park. We've had a great summer out at the park, and I did want to remind everyone that, that the pool is slated to remain open until Wednesday, August the 14th. At that point, we'll begin the process of shutting the pool down, as many of our lifeguards will be going back to school. Additionally, touching base on Castlewood Park, that's one I've been talking about for a long time, if you recall. We got a $200,000 grant from the Cole Foundation to come in and rehab the park, put all new equipment in, really spruce the place up and put a, put a facelift on Castlewood. But that new equipment has, will finally be arriving next week, and our assembly crews are mobilizing on the 18th to begin the rebuilding process and, and that much-needed facelift to Castlewood. At this point, obviously, we'll publicize these dates as well, but the park is slated to be closed from August the 18th through the 30th for those renovations. Our goal is to try to have the park open prior to the, the Labor Day holiday. Another great accolade I'd like to touch on from our Health Department, I know I sound like a broken record, it seems like I'm coming to you guys almost every month with accolades that our, that our Health Department has received, but that team just continues to rack up great national and statewide recognition. And last week, our Health Department and our Environmental Health Section were the recipients of the Samuel J. Crumbine Consumer Protection Award. This is a prestigious award, it's given by the National Association of County and City Health Officials yearly to a group that demonstrates unsurpassed achievements in consumer protection. Please join me in congratulating Holly here and her team in environmental health on this outstanding achievement. Richmond County was also highlighted in 2023 as the first and the only county in the state, as well as southeastern United States, to meet all nine voluntary national retail food regulatory program standards as well. Transitioning to our Economic Development Department, our EDP NC, Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, released their North Carolina Select Site Readiness Report about two and a half weeks ago, and those details, efforts to identify the top 15 industrial sites that are best positioned in our state to successfully serve major advanced manufacturing properties. And the report was produced by Site Selection Group, SSG, and a national site, which is a national site consultation firm, and with some technical support provided by Thomas and Hutton. And I'm excited to announce that our Energy Way Industrial Park was named one of those top 15 sites in the state. Obviously, I'm a little biased, I think it's one of the top 15 in the nation. But Marty and I have worked tirelessly for Richmond County to be eligible for this designation, and as we continue to market the site daily. This is just another great accolade that we can put in our toolbox that keeps us in the forefront of economic development throughout the state of North Carolina. Designation opens up opportunities for additional funding for the park and its potential expansion. Currently, there is a $10 million allotment for this new fiscal year, 24-25, to fund due diligence at these identified sites. Additionally, on the economic development front, we have shifted into overdrive for our annual Raffle of the Rock fundraiser for economic development, partnering with the Speedway for hops and hot rods. This year will be the best year yet. We'll have over 30 prizes, as we always do, guns, cash, many other large-scale projects, John Deere Zero Turn mower, Polaris 450 four-wheeler, and the new addition this year that we're all extremely excited about, that we've been trying to set as a goal for quite a few years, almost since we've been doing it, is the addition of a new car. That's right, we'll be giving away a new car, a 2024 Nissan Sentra. Griffin Automotive Group has, has helped us out and discounted that vehicle for us. So we're real excited about that, hopefully that'll ramp up sales. And that event is slated for November 2nd, so ticket sales will start soon. We'll need your help with purchasing those and helping to sell them. Lastly, I did want to remind everyone that over the next few weeks, the school bells will be ringing, you heard from Dr. Farrell earlier, but those bells will be ringing once again. As a reminder, always drive carefully in the mornings and the afternoon, and at all times, and watch out for those school buses, the extra traffic and the congestion that will be around our roadways throughout Richmond County. Lastly, a schedule change, reminding our citizens and the board, due to Labor Day, that we will be observing on Monday, September 2nd. Our September Commissioners Meeting will be moved to Tuesday, the 10th, the following week. And lastly, our thoughts and prayers are with, with everybody, especially our neighbors on the coast, as we prepare for Hurricane Debbie. And we will be sending out numerous reports for that, as, as they're given to us from Bob and his team over at Emergency Management. And that's all I have for this evening, I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Anything for Brian, Commissioners? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Item 11, there's a, open for, for public comment, there's two people that are excited for that. First, Mr. Gary Richardson. Gary?
Good evening, Mr. Good evening. Sound like I got a lot of great things going wrong around our county. This is my wife, Deborah, she's, she's my CSO, and she's got a few things she would like to read.
Good evening. When I came to this meeting, my, my natural personality is to be sarcastic and ugly, but I, that's not who God is that I serve. We have been in the school now for six years, and my husband's got the statistics of how many people that we've helped. And I was listening to the wonderful things that our CC is going to do with that grant money, and I'm thinking, but, but we already do all these things. We, we are already doing these, we, we are a reentry program. Not only, I mean, like I said, it's a wonderful program, but where are they going to live? We have, like I said, we've been doing this for six years, and never once have we received a dime from the county, but what we have received is poor lost souls dropped off at our gates because there's nowhere for them to go. We do an emergency cold weather shelter because the drug addicts will freeze to death, and there is nowhere for them to go, and this is, this is ugly. This is, this is not pretty, this is not part of the community that anybody wants to deal with, but that is what that settlement money is for, for those people. And you represent each and every drug addict in this county, just as well as the people that are in this courtroom. You represent them, and I'm not sure that, that what has happened here tonight, the fact that we're not speaking until after you've already voted, I'm not sure that this is the best representation of what this county can do. And coming in here, I wanted to be angry with each and every one of you, how could you do this? You know what we do. But I don't do it because the county tells us to do it, and I don't do it because there's money involved. We do it because God has told us that we have to do this. And I'm going to refer each of you to Matthew 25. I was hungry and you fed me. I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. And I'm sure each of you know that scripture, and it's talking about the sheep and the goats. And I'm going to be a sheep, and, and I'm going to do what God tells me to do. And you probably have opened up a revenue to find, a way to funding that we've never even thought about. But I, I, I ask that you consider this in your, in your monthly meetings of, is this the best use of the settlement? Because I'm pretty sure it was intended to help the people that are under the bridge, and the people who are in the crack houses. I think that's what it was meant for, and we have a proven record of helping those people. Thank you.
Thank you. As well as.
Sorry.
Helping some of the young people from going that direction, and we're very glad that that's happened. We are proven, we, we have helped a ton of people. We've given out a population of food, almost four and a half million pounds of food on top of the hill. We have all the statistics of the people who get fed, who've been housed, who's come through our program. We just had 10 to go through our program that went out, and not one of them went back to the street. And we have our connections with the Community College. Today, there was class on our campus from the Community College, with all of the job skills, with all the GED, all the programs are in place, partnering with San Hill's Best Care for the math program. One of the biggest obstacles these guys have in trying to recover is have a safe place to lay their head, and not have to go to the doctor's office, get a shot, and live beside the drug house or live in drug activity. It's very difficult. So we just, we're, we're asking you to consider helping. Our emergency shelter's coming up in November. It starts November 1st to March 1st, it's the winter months. We'll have 20 to 30 people to come in. We Narcaned eight people back to life just, just this past year. We took three to detox. We work closely with DeMark as well. They can't house here, so we have to take them to Ashboro. I, I, I just had a simple question, and not begrudging anybody that got grant funding, it's all needed everywhere it goes, because it's for the people in our community who you serve and who we serve. What it will make us have to do is go back to the same people and say, we need your help again this year, to help us fund what we're doing, because their sons and daughters, and some of the sons and daughters' moms and dads or siblings need a place to stay. And so, it's, it's upward just for utilities, maintenance, and insurance, around $85,000 a year, just, just for that. As my CFO mentioned, you know, we have to fundraise that. I think our humane society gets over $300,000 a year for animals. We're not doing much. We're not doing anything in the way of homeless with humans. I think we need to. I think it'd be a great representation, and my wife said, other people in Richmond County. I work alongside with the Sheriff's Department, I'm a chaplain for the Sheriff's Department. We do our due diligence, we help the DA, and a lot of different cases with young people and what have you. We have food pantry twice a week, clothing closet's five days a week, we have housewares five days a week, it's all free, and it's all for the place. You know where we at, Dr. Watson, he used to have to light the boiler, so his kids wouldn't freeze when we go to school. So he's well aware of where we are, and other Dr. Ganey, or Commissioner Ganey, as far as I know, he's going to want to spend to our location for even a tour. I know Brian's been there when we made the trade. Do you know this year makes six years, this month, that we've been on top of the hill? We've been in the trench 24/7 for six years, and we've never stood here and asked for anything. So when the grand opportunity come by, I thought, this would be great, be fantastic. Not only can we continue services, we can enhance them, we can do things. And so, I guess the, the feelings get heightened when you see where the money goes, but Samaritan Colony is a phenomenal place. I work closely with Mark Christopher, we do the one hand, handoff. I house people for him, I'll call him, and I'll house them till they can get to him. Because one of our ways of getting to, plus a grace, is detox, if you can't pass a drug test, detox. Samaritan Colony or a 28-day program, preferably Samaritan Colony, and then come back to us, or they could choose to stay in their program, go to Aberdeen and get a job and work, do the 90, 90. But even they got $18,000 for their women's part. That's not even in function. They don't house women right now, they're not complete. So it makes me ask questions, why couldn't we, at least we get 18,000? As a part of that, I'm just wondering why we weren't considered, because the only definition I've got of why we did not get granted was the church would do it anyway. That's upsetting, because the church has been doing it anyway for about 12 years now. We didn't walk in that building with a grant, we won't leave because we didn't get one. It's not about that, it's about the partnership. It seems we've made a lot of partnerships with everybody but the county, who we'd love to partner with.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here with us. Next one signed up is Mr. Jerry Tiller.
It's a tough act to follow, the wonderful speaker. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for inviting me and allowing me to talk to you and speak on something I think is very important. You may recall that I've been here on a few occasions over the past few months in regards to comments made by elected official about a teenager who was just being brave and being authentic self. We came to the board, and we asked for an apology and accountability, we were met with silence. But in the wake of all that, there is still a portion of the county that's voting public that have been offended and outraged by the behavior of some of the elected officials in the county, and so I come here today to offer you an easy solution, to take out two proverbial birds with one proverbial stone. While it's not a widely known fact, Pride Month is celebrated in different months and different areas based on the weather, academic school year, holiday businesses, traffic, and various other reasons. It just so happens that a few years ago in the Raleigh-Durham area, the local LGBTQIA+ plus community got together and decided that, A, most of the students that would want to participate in Pride go home for the summer, and B, June in the South is literally hell unearthed, and so they decided to move Pride Month to September to make it easier for everyone to attend. Other areas of the state followed suit, and now while June is National Pride Month, September has become an unofficial official Pride Month for the state of Carolina. Now, I don't know if any of you actually care about this or not, but while we were participating in our march last month in regards to the comments made, we received an outpouring of support from the community. One young lady, whose name I will and won't mention, she saw us on Facebook, she came down here, drove to the courthouse to tell us how scared she was to be her true self in this county, and that she was humbled to have us speaking for her since she couldn't speak for herself. So now I'm asking you to join me in speaking for the voices of Richmond County, and make a proclamation at your September meeting that Richmond County will join dozens of other counties across the state and. and recognize September as NC Pride Month. Show the people like this young woman who saw a glimmer of hope for this county that you don't just care about the citizens that you agree with and that Richmond County is a place where everyone is welcome. As I've stated before, we can do all of this without you, but we'd rather do it with you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's the two that we had signed up, have to sign up. Mr. Chairman.
Last week I got skipped. Deanna, we've been through this before. Today, she did the same thing.
Right, you have to sign up, man.
No, I did sign. Jeff, you know I know this process. She's been doing this. She needs a resignation, man.
This is a business meeting, and I don't, I don't appreciate you doing.
I normally don't do that. You know that, man. I'm tired of, I sacrifice my resources to travel.
You'll be removed.
And she's being slack, man.
Thank you.
Come on now, Jeff.
You're going to need to sit down and be removed. Just simple as that.
I get you, man.
This is a business meeting. You don't come in here and fight about employment, okay?
She's slack. I hear you, but she's slack.
Thank you. That's your opinion.
That is true. I got evidence.
And that's enough.
I'll show you the email, Jeff.
And that's enough. Thank you. That concludes our open forum session for tonight. Now we're going to close session. We will come back at a close session in the German meeting. Thank you for your attention.